The November 4th, 2013 meeting and public hearing of the City of Falls Church Planning Commission is now in session. Ms. G., would you please call the roll?
Present.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Here.
Mr. Meeks?
Here.
Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Ms. Rogers?
Here.
Ms. Teetz?
Here.
Mr. Wodisca?
Here.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. G. Do I have a motion for adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 The motion carries. This agenda is adopted. I'm going to suggest that you note that the Planning Commission reports and the Planning Director's report have been moved to the end of the meeting. We tried it out last time to see if it would work, and it seemed to, so we're going to try it out. We're going to give it a second trial tonight, see if that works. Are there any petitions from the audience on items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, I will move on to old business, and seeing none on the agenda, I'll move on to new business. The first order of new business is ordinance TO-13-18, the ordinance to create Chapter 35 stormwater management. We are being asked to recommend, make a recommendation to the City Council on this. I know I have it. Are we going to get anything from this, on this from Jason, or is this something that you're going to discuss with us, Mr. Snyder?
Well, two things, I guess. We have Kirsten Muntz here, and we gave you a supplemental memorandum that proposes the changes in the zoning ordinance that would memorialize what coverage and impervious areas are from a zoning point of view. This would give us the 35 percent in zoning, which is being removed as far as the Chesapeake Bay changes. And you'll see a list there of items that are proposed to be counted towards impervious area. So there's a definition that would be added. It's a very simple ordinance amendment on the zoning side that we think would give you appropriate control similar to what you have today, but have a specific definition for what zoning counts. Now, from a stormwater point of view, there are other things that Public Works might count in terms of the stormwater and water quality issues, but that's done through a separate set of calculations. For example, swimming pools are counted as impervious as far as the stormwater and stormwater and the Chesapeake Bay water quality, but not counted as impervious in terms of the zoning ordinance in this proposal. So we're recommending that this be, these, this language be adopted as part of the recommendation going to City Council, in addition to the changes that Public Works has proposed.
Okay, so our recommendation would be then to recommend to the City Council to either approve or disapprove of the stormwater ordinance, and if we, if we say approved, we would also recommend the changes to Chapter 48 in the zoning code?
Yes, ma'am. In other words, we would, one of the concerns that had been expressed as we've been talking about this is, what will happen to the hard cap of 35 percent? And this would institute that as part of the zoning ordinance and add a definition from a zoning perspective as to what impervious would mean.
Seems...
Leaving building coverage at 25 percent.
Are there any questions from?
Question here.
Yes.
The 25 percent that you mentioned, isn't that just for residential use?
There is none.
This is for the, this typically is covering the, the R1A and R1B zones, which is most, the largest proportion of the city, the residential portion of the city.
Okay, and commercial is, or other uses is 30 percent?
Commercial, in the B zones, for example, many of them do not have a building coverage requirement.
Okay.
May I? Okay, thank you. On your recommendation with the 25 percent and there's no, no extra point, I mean, as far as, what I'm trying to say is the new water quality standards, it says 35 percent cap, impervious, and you don't have that listed under, in your memo?
Our memorandum, I think, has 35 percent as the impervious area, and that would be the cap from a zoning point of view. It defines buildings, paving, et cetera. So it's those physical things that you see when you look at a built site. Chesapeake Bay and water quality issues are more complex, and they have more, more, there's more formula and some other items are considered. We're trying to keep this straightforward, so...
But, okay, but that is definitely going to be considered under, with your recommendations?
This is, this is putting that 35 percent in the zoning ordinance and having a definition of what impervious means. By the same, but presently, it exists as part of the Chesapeake Bay ordinance, so as that's removed, and the Chesapeake Bay ordinance is proposed to stand on its own, this would, this would fill that gap, which has been one of the concerns.
Okay. That was one of our biggest...
We've heard from others as we've talked about this, so we've tried to keep this straightforward and simple with a simple definition.
Because we were concerned about parallel legislation that would cover that without a gap to it.
Yes.
But I just wanted to make sure that 25 percent and 30, 35 percent...
And that's the intent, is to keep that 25 and 35 percent in here as the Chesapeake Bay piece is removed.
Any, any other questions from Commissioners? Is the City Council aware that we're going to be suggesting that, they've already looked at this? We're not just recommending this?
There has been, we have been, we have been asked to work on that aspect of it, and so we thought, we know the Commission have been particularly interested in making sure we got this done, so the delay in, in advancing this has been partially to allow this to go forward, and it's something that can be made between first and second reading. Council gave first reading to the Chesapeake Bay ordinance back in July.
So this won't have to go through first and second reading?
This is an, this is...
It's an amendment to what they're going to approve?
Amendment to, addition to, right. Plugging that hole left by the removal of the Chesapeake Bay ordinance?
Okay, I just, I just don't want, I just wanted to know, we're not surprising them with this?
No, I think they'll, I think this is something that people have been hoping could happen at the same time as the Chesapeake Bay ordinance is moved into its own separate chapter.
Okay. Any further questions on this? Melissa, do we have a motion?
Okay. And I didn't see a sample motion in there, correct?
Um, no, I, there may not have been one in there. Yes, sorry.
No, I just, no, I'm sure I can handle it. I just, sometimes they have specific language that they would prefer. Anyway, I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the Council adopt TO-13-18 ordinance to create Chapter 35 stormwater, Article 1 stormwater management of the Falls Church City Code to clarify and reorganize the existing stormwater management regulation, and to add new language required by the state of Virginia.
I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded to approve, to recommend to the City Council that they approve stormwater ordinance TO-13-18.
And could you add also the language from the memorandum?
Oh, and adding the, I'm sorry. The language to the zoning code, Chapter 48.
Yeah, in addition, recommend that the Council add the language to zoning code, I mean, to Chapter 48 zoning.
And this would include the definition of impervious and the 35 percent?
Including the definition of impervious and the 35 percent.
Yep.
Do you second?
And I certainly accept that. Thank you.
Ms. G., would you call the roll to this, this recommendation and amended recommendation? This is the vote on the amended, amended recommendation, recommendation or motion. Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes.
Mr. John?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Can I make one comment?
Yes, you may make a comment.
I just wanted to make one comment that I, I'm really glad to see us move forward with this. I was on the Watershed Management Task Force, and it was clear with all the work that we did, and I don't know if anyone got a chance to review all of the sections of the report that was put together, but it was very clear that if we didn't deal with some of this stormwater runoff from all our properties, not just commercial, that we're not going to get a handle on these issues. And so I know a lot of people aren't totally happy about this, but, you know, most of our land in this city is residential, or it's church, and it's not just commercial. And every time we have a new commercial project, those projects have to deal with all the water, so a lot of the new water issues aren't coming from new developments.
Thank you.
The new developments are actually dealing with the water better than the previous properties did on those commercial properties. It's really residential. And so, you know, there's a real need for this change in the way that we deal with stormwater.
And could I add something? I just hope that all the inspection items will be promptly handled and, you know, make sure that things are kept as they should be, because that really worries me, particularly on residential.
Thank you, Ms. Hockenberry. Any further comments? All right. We will move on to item B under new business, which is a naming initiative, and we're being asked to recommend endorsement of this naming initiative to the City Council. Mr. Snyder?
I don't see Mr. Schlitt here, but this is a request of his to name, I believe, the Community Center for Ken Burnett, and looking for your recommendation endorsement to City Council.
Okay. I have two speaker slips on this item. I'd like to call them now. The first one is Charlie O'Hara. Mr. O'Hara, would you approach the microphone, give your name and address, and we'll give you more than three minutes because you're representing the Parks and Recreation Department.
Excuse me, before you begin, at the bottom of the microphone, your question... Thank you. Charlie O'Hara, 2717 Welcome Drive, Falls Church. This request has been driven by the Advisory Board of Recreation and Parks. Early this year, we sent a request on the Council to name the Community Center for Kenneth R. Burnett. I've been on the Advisory Board for 23 years, and Ken resigned just before I got on it, so that shows you how long the history has been. So I'm going to ask, take a little bit of a poll, if you don't mind. How many of you lived, have lived in the city for less than 10 years? Come on, how many have lived here between 10 and 20 years? How many have lived here between 20 and 30 years? 30 and 40? Over 50?
No, but 45.
Okay. So you'll see what we have with regards to the history of Ken Burnett. He retired from the city in 1990. He was the first director of Recreation and Parks, and he was the director from 1962 to 1990. When he retired in 1990, the building was dedicated to him, and there's a plaque, if you go inside the Community Center, that establishes that dedication. Why was the building only dedicated to him? Because of the time, of his retirement, at the time of the dedication, the city had an ordinance in place that prevented buildings or parks in the city from being named for living persons. Well, that statute, that ordinance has been changed about two years ago, and now we have the opportunity to complete what was started 23 years ago when the building was dedicated to Ken by actually naming it for him. Ken is still alive, he still resides in the city, part-time, resides here, and he also resides, I believe, in Myrtle Beach. As indicated, Ken was the first director, worked here for 28 years. He hired the second director, who worked from 1990 to 2012. So look at the history he created. Over those 50 years, we had two directors of Recreation and Parks. Most of the things you associate with our Recreation and the Parks, the things we are well-known for, were established when Ken was director. The youth sports programs, the adult sports programs, the Community Center itself was built on Ken's watch, and the farmer's market was established while Ken was director. Most of the parks that are present in our system were established while Ken was the director. I think the only two that came on later were West End and now the Howard E. Herman Stream Valley Park. So most of the bones of what we have as the Recreation and the Parks were established when Ken was here. If you'll talk to the people who were here in the '60s, '70s, I think you'll find that the city was governed by the triumvirate of three. You had Harry Wells as the city manager, you had Don Frady as the director of Public Works, and you had Ken Burnett as the director of Parks and Recreations. We're sitting in the Harry Wells Building, which was named while Harry was alive. You can walk down Broad Street and walk into a beautiful park, Donald Frady Park, which was established when Don was alive. I think Ken Burnett deserves that same honor, and we're requesting that you recommend to the Council that the Community Center be named in honor of Ken Burnett, and I think what has been proposed as the Falls Church Community Center, the Kenneth R. Burnett Building. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. O'Hara. Our second speaker slip is Barry Bushow.
Hi, Barry Bushow, 903 Madison Lane. I was a member of the Advisory Board from '89 to 2000, not currently a member, but I am supporting this request for, for naming. I was on the Recreation Board when Ken was, was the director, and when he retired, we did make an effort to give him the, the naming of the building to, to him, but unfortunately it failed, although there was precedence to do such a thing. Ken and I went back a long ways. When I grew up in the city in the '50s and '60s, there were virtually no recreation facilities in the city whatsoever. When Ken came along, January 1st, 1962, he established many youth programs right off the bat, and I participated in many of them, became the city champion on three or four different occasions. This is the only piece of paper I've got left, but here's Ken's picture when he was awarded the job on November 1961. He just was out of Lynchburg College, and he was, matter of fact, he was inducted into the Lynchburg College Hall of Fame in 1986. So he made an instant impact on, on all the kids in Falls Church. In 1998, we had a symposium on, on Falls Church for the Tricentennial, and I put together, I reviewed all of the background and all the notes and minutes the Advisory Board had had from day one, and I wrote a paper on the subject, but I'll just read an excerpt from it that deals with the Ken part. Basically, in 1952, Falls Church had no recreational facilities. It owned Madison, Madison was the only school, the other schools were all in Fairfax County. Baseball and basketball were offered through Arlington Recreation Department, and that was pretty slim, I'll have to tell you that. Late 1961, City Council approved a full-time position for the Director of Recreation and Parks, and on January 1st, Mr. Kenneth R. Burnett began employment with the city as the first full-time Director of Recreation and Parks. Mr. Burnett was a former high school, was a former high school and Lynchburg College athlete, and an Assistant Director of Recreation for the city of Lynchburg. When Mr. Burnett took over the Recreation Program, surplus army barracks had been moved from one location to another. That's how, Don Frady got these old barracks, and he originally put them over on Hillwood Avenue, then they got moved to the Frog Falls Church property, and then they ended up on Cherry Street, and Ken Burnett inherited that. Finally, the, let's see, finally the statue was composed, oh, okay. I've got way ahead of myself.
Okay.
So put these, he put these army barracks on the property that's now the old Jefferson Institute, which is now Child Development Center, and going to be back at school again pretty soon. Finally, the structure wore out, and in 1963, the Recreation Parks Department composed a one employee. Mr. Burnett moved to the basement of City Hall, and a 15 by 15 space, that was the coffee room for city employees, and I think it still is, isn't it? The one down there is real small. Although Mr. Don Frady laid the frame, groundwork for additional parkland in Falls Church, Mr. Kenneth Burnett, leadership and direction, expanded the Recreation Programs and parkland, and he started to increase all of the, the land available that he and Harry Wells could, could get under city contract. Lincoln Park was given to the city in 1891 with the development of Sherwood Division, subdivision, and was the only park in the city until the 1960s, with the help of city manager Harry Wells and Hal Haverstein and Charles Hepidemi, they were able to gain more parkland. Mr. Burnett was able to increase the inventory of park property in the city. City parks started to appear, such as Robert Park off of Randolph Street, Berman Park off of Kent Street, Four Mile Run, Isaac Newsing, and Cherry, Cherry Street tennis courts were first constructed. A major park that was added during this timeframe in the early '60s also was Cherry Hill Park. So Ken Burnett had his hand in not only the Community Center, but many of the parklands we have now in the city. After several years of lobbying and hard work, remember, he came in 1962, January 9th, 1966, the Advisory Committee on the Auditorium and Civic Center delivered its report requesting a bond referendum for two facilities. On November 8th, 1966, Proposition 2, that included the Community Center, library, and parkland, passed 1750 votes, four, and 1,007 against. So, City Council awarded a contract on December 26, 1967, to the lowest bidder, Eugene Thomas Construction, in the amount of $295,550 to build the Community Center. Parkley and Pierce were the architects. And on October 4th, 1968, after a dedication ceremony that included Governor Godwin, Mr. Burnett moved into the Recreation and Parks Department, Falls Church Community Center. So he had his hand in many things. This is a very appropriate action, and I don't know what else I can tell you.
I hope you're going to make a motion.
I think Ms. Hockenberry knew him, and Ruth, I know you must know him, so I, I think this is...
I thought his son.
I think this is well justified and...
I just have to say, we...
Look forward to your endorsement to the City Council, which we're going to go to next Monday night, hopefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bushow. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this, this item? Seeing none, I'll close to the public. Any comments from the Planning Commission?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to move that we support this resolution to rename the Falls Church Community Center, the Kenneth R. Burnett Building, as requested.
And I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded that we recommend to City Council to rename the Falls Church Community Center, to the Falls Church Community Center Kenneth R. Burnett Building. Ms. G., would you call the roll, please? Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes.
Mr. John?
I have to abstain because I don't have a lot of information about this, this gentleman, but I'm sure he's great, so I have to abstain on this one. Thank you.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. We'll look forward to having this, I hope, pass the City Council as well, and if there is, I hope we get invited to the renaming ceremony.
Love it.
Thank you. Danny, I'm sorry we had to start without you. We have no other business on our agenda, so we'll move on to approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes, October the 7th and October 21st. I'll start with October the 7th. We had to postpone this from last week because Ms. G. was absent. Okay, are there any amendments to the minutes? Did everyone have a chance to look them over? Any amendments? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
I move to adopt minutes of 7 October 2013.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the motion, the minutes of October 7th are approved. We'll move on to October 21st.
Excuse me.
I have no...
Madam Chairman, I have to...
Oh, I'm sorry, did you abstain?
Yeah, I have to abstain because I wasn't here that day.
Okay. I'm sorry. Any abstentions?
It was noted. It was noted all the way through here.
I was too ready to point it out to her. Hey, wait a minute, he has abstained.
Okay. Mr. John abstained, but everyone else voted yes. We will not have any abstentions on this one, because we were all here. The 21st of October, are there any amendments to the minutes? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move that we accept the minutes of October 21st, 2013.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 The minutes of October 21st, 2013 have been approved. Thank you, Ms. G. Good minutes. Okay. Well, we have our things coming up that we can talk about it. Okay. Now, this is the change in our agenda. We now have Planning Commissioner reports. Do I have any plan, are there any Planning Commissioner reports? None? I think I'm, this is a good move, Ms. G., to move this. We're tired now.
Everyone's worn down.
Oh, come on. I bet the Planning Director will still have a report. I hope.
I wanted to mention that there will be a joint work session, I believe, at the TJ School, 7:30 on November 14th, which is joint between City Council and School Board, and the Commission is invited to attend. That's a Thursday. We will be meeting on the 18th, where we have a number of zoning ordinance amendments that are coming to you, the Mobile Food Service one, and the Water Utility Ordinance. City Council, at its last meeting, did approve the Small Area Plan. We had some good discussions with VIPUS, and the Chair was present for that. Those edits, a lot of edits were made, good suggestions made, and Council unanimously approved the Small Area Plan for, for South Washington Street. You have in front of you a draft of the City Center's Small Area Plan that we hope to unveil and have some discussion on, on November 23rd, Saturday, at the Tax Analyst Building. That's, other places were not available, but that's a Saturday from about 9:00 to 11:30. And so we're looking to try to move this along. As you recall, there was a good bit of information in that, in the South Washington Street Plan about future of City Center, so we're hoping later this evening to get some beginning discussion on this and to get comments from you in the coming weeks on that. Wanted to mention that Dennis Washington, our zoning inspector, has been hired by Arlington County, where he'll be doing, he began today, and he's working with them doing site plan inspections as part of a site plan team, so we'll be trying to figure out how to plug that hole. But Mr. Washington was with us for about more than, about nine and three-quarters years, and made a lot of contributions here in the city, including being liaison with the Architectural Advisory Board for a number of years. So we wish him well, it's a good opportunity for him, and we had a little event on Friday where a lot of his colleagues and the city manager and assistant city manager and others attended. So we'll, we'll be looking to fill that position. We're also going to be looking at the, pending the election and the referendum tomorrow, we'll begin looking at the additions to the city, should the voters approve that, that referendum. So there's a lot, lot going on, and we're looking forward to working with you through the remainder of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. We have before us the November copies of site plans for review. Is that something we want to talk about now or at the work session?
At your pleasure. One of the things we are looking at is how can we get by with less paper, and are there some good ideas that we go forward in terms of how we might get... some good ideas as we go forward in terms of how we might get you good information? As you recall, and we've done some research on the costs of some of those materials that developers put together, particularly the big, multiple copies of big site plans, I think it was several thousand dollars, the last one, so wondering whether, is there electronic media, for example, that could be used, or individual commissioners, some of you want electronic but not paper copy? So Lauren Bruce had put together a list of some ideas for discussion with this group, which we could talk about briefly now, or we could do it following our work session.
All right. Given that we've been discussing having a, some kind of a meeting of planning commission with the staff to go over other priorities, would this be something that we could include there, or are you looking to get something on this, decided on this prior to that? I'd like to do this, for lack of a better word, retreat before the end of the year. So if we're gonna do something like that, this could be included, but if you want to get it taken care of before that, we could discuss it afterwards at the work session.
Well, what I'd like to, here are some ideas that you can keep. I think we could have, we could, we'll have to find a date that works, but have a discussion that would kind of set us up for the next year. And, you know, I'm particularly interested in the question, I think Mr. John mentioned that your planning commission training at Loudoun County, for example, and maybe you want to expand on that.
Yeah, and that's one thing I wanted to add to this, to your list, was to see if we could be giving individual, maybe PC tablets or iPads, and then with that, you know, we could have everything sent to us electronically, because the fellow commissioners in Loudoun County actually do have iPads, and, you know, they were raving about how great it was because they didn't have to have paper copies of plans that they had to lug along. So I think it's really convenient. It moves us into a much better age, rather than have all these deliveries to houses. Because I still have a lot of papers sitting at home.
Well, and we did find out, we did find out, for example, it was several thousand dollars and took most of a day to print those large site plans for Tanner Hill. Not that, it isn't important to have some paper copies, but whether all seven commissioners need a copy, or whether we could, you know, have less paper and more electronic material. The cost of that could have purchased electronic devices for the entire commission, so. It's certainly something we're thinking about.
But the city didn't pay for the printing of those?
No, we didn't, but we pay, there is cost and time involved, and of course, we have to assemble and distribute, and we deliver packages and so forth. There's a lot of cost and time spent organizing these things. So I think it's, it's certainly, we didn't have it here, but it's certainly, I think, useful to ask the question as to whether there's electronic media that could be helpful. And so if we have that, you know, we'd love to get your thoughts on this list, and we could talk about it in more detail if we have a retreat, but in the meantime, you could also, so send us your thoughts...
Okay.
...on this. But I do want to thank Lauren Bruce, who put this together for us, who was here with us tonight, and I do think it's an important thing to think about. We've tried to accommodate various commissioners' requests, some who do not want paper or want a limited amount, and how big and how much is a good question, and then the possibility of electronic media, using city Wi-Fi, for example, to access some of these documents, would be, I think, a useful thing to talk about. Certainly could save time and money.
Are we weighing in now? Can I?
Yes, you may weigh in.
I appreciate you guys putting together this list. Certainly, the Tanner Hill site plan was over the top for the purposes of, for my own personal purposes, so I am strongly in support of this happening. I find that the paper that we're generating right now is extremely wasteful. As you laid out here, I think there are five or six key pages that I tend to look at, and those I'm able to scale, or enlarge to my liking on my computer. I'm not taking a, literally a scale to the dimensions and trusting what's on the plan, so I don't need to have it in front of me so I can put a ruler down and measure square footage. That's not the type of things that I'm looking at as a planning commissioner. So my personal preference is, on your list of five items, item one, two, four, and five look great to me, and I don't even need a eleven-by-seventeen copy, but if you were, if that is the overwhelming sentiment of the commission, I would just want the five, five or six, seven, eight, you know, key pages. So I think these are terrific. I would like as much electronically as we can, and I certainly support the distribution of a tablet of some sort to make that easier. I'll bring my own laptop if necessary, but the laptops, I think, sort of obstruct our view. I've watched lots of school board meetings with my wife, and they're all just sort of lined up in front of everybody, and I don't think that's as welcoming to the public, but something that's small and can be managed, that'd be great.
Thank you. Any further? Melissa?
Yeah, I was just saying, I'm fine with the survey results, the suggestion here, the one, two, three, four, and five. I actually would like the eleven-by-seventeen personally, but I also would be happy if we just got the five or six key pages, because I've looked at, those really are the pages I look at the most, and I can always look at more online if I had to.
Any further? I'm gonna reserve my comments for later.
I would really support this also, as long as what Russ mentioned, I really do not like the use of personal computers at meetings, because I think it distracts, and people do not make eye contact with the audience, and it just really, really bothers me. But something that we could refer to, that we'd be using for documents and everything, I would be very much in favor of that.
Thank you. We'll have this on, if we, when we find out what the best time to have our little retreat would be, then we can also finalize the recommendations on this.
Okay, very good. Your comments today were helpful, and we'll look forward to ones in the future, and if you have additional thoughts, please relay them to Ms. G.
Can I just make one comment, that if we're going to try to do something retreat-like or some type of meeting before the end of the year, we need to have dates pretty soon. I personally am filling up very quickly with Girl Scout events and family events and...
Well, if we don't get to do it before the end of the year, we can do it very early in January, but I'm not talking about a day-long event. I'm talking about two hours.
Well, no, I understand, but I'm just saying, even my weeknights are starting to fill up with Christmas and holiday events, you know.
As well as family Christmas.
Like all of us.
Okay, I have only...
Madam Chair, before we leave this issue, any commissioner who has not yet provided comments and would like to do so, please send them to me, but only to me. Don't do the whole commission, or you're having an electronic meeting.
You mean on this?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Snyder, I have only one further question on your report. A couple of weeks ago, I asked about four-oh-eight Van Buren, North Van Buren Street, and the fact that the yard seemed to have been extended into our paper street and improved by the developer of the property, and you said you would check it out. Have you been able to do that?
I did go by and look at it a couple of times, and I could see that where there had been construction and underbrush removed, there's now grass growing. I think what we need to do is be able to locate exactly where the corner is of the property, so this would also be working with Mr. Schlitt and his group, you know, where that property line can be delineated.
Yeah.
So I did go and look at it, I did see what you were looking at. I think we need to try to, I will contact the owner and see if we can determine where the boundary line is and make sure that that's clear.
Yeah, and I was just thinking, even if the city puts some kind of a, I'm not talking about a stockade fence or anything, but some kind of an indication of where city land...
Right, where the city property starts.
Starts, yes.
That might be able to be done right behind the sidewalk, for example.
And can I suggest, we had suggested that that would be an additional trail area now if we're gonna use it, that there may be even a mulch walkway, but there was some type of signage so people know that that is public property and that they can use it, because we've got a lot of places in the city that are public walkways that have been crowded by the neighboring homes to the point where you don't feel safe or you don't feel comfortable using them, and it's not, it's not a good thing, because these are connectors for neighborhoods.
That was one of the areas that was being talked about. I don't think a decision was made in the various plans that were being developed. There is a trail, and there's, it's kind of an odd situation, because we have Arlington who owns part of the city property for a park, and you can see people walking through there, so it's something we should look at as part of that whole system.
Russ, did you have something?
Yeah, just a quick question on the report. On page two, at the very top, there is a fiscal year income chart, and the numbers look odd to me for the planning department. Our, it says to date, we've collected three hundred dollars of eighty-five thousand. Are we missing a zero or something?
Could be. We've had a lot of big checks come in, so I'll double-check that.
Okay.
We, and in our October report, actually, looking ahead, I believe we've, you'll find we've had our busiest month at the counter since we began keeping records, and we're beginning to get some large checks from the Tanner Hill, first check came in, for example, and we'll be seeing more of those coming through, so we'll be, there's a lot of activity, both large and small, here in the city, and our, the revenue coming in is gonna be significant.
Yeah, so based on that...
It's a challenge to keep up with, but I'll double-check those numbers.
Yeah, it looks like there's a zero missing or something, because it says this month you did two hundred dollars.
It's gotta be a zero. I'll double-check that.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forth an idea to the planning commission and to staff, that perhaps we do some preliminary possibility, there's two iffy words, and looking into the possibility of combining the South Washington streetscape from Mr. Young's property down to Tanner Hill, and the reason I'm asking for this and for one other piece there that I will mention in a minute, is that I think that if we've got contracts out there, you know, if, that could be a possibility, along with what's going on at the reserve at Tanner Hill, it'd be a very good time to at least do all the undergrounding and get it done. And the other piece of this idea is to finish the section from the reserve to the corner of South Maple and South Washington. I looked at that today, and some of it's very, very narrow, particularly going over the stream, so I don't know the possibilities of that, but it would seem rather silly to have all the equipment in there for the reserve and not backing up into the contract with the reserve of doing it all in the same streetscape plan that we have for the reserve, because it would look rather silly to have a hunk of brick and then the historic site. So just to see if there's a possibility for the CIP coming up.
Well, certainly something we could look at, is the CIP will be coming to you. I would say that Kirsten Muntz and Public Works has been looking at various optional designs for the South Maple and Washington Street intersection, and we have a variety of them we've been looking at actively. Some of them involve, you know, trying to improve the geometry of the road so we have a better, more of a ninety-degree connection with Washington Street, and I agree with you, the sidewalks and the bridge there are very inadequate, and so those are things that may need to be looked at. There is a gap between the area of the Transit Plaza that will be constructed and the Tanner Hill Development Project. There is a streetscape and overhead wiring gap there that either will remain or will need to be addressed, that could be done is one thing. Not inexpensive, but certainly something, if you may want to bring up...
I don't ever see the sense in going back and doing something over again or something like that.
But there is a gap that you've identified though, so I appreciate that.
The other thing is to really work on an interesting plan for the Fairfax Street, Rolling Road, to perhaps turn that into a very, very nice, small park over the, over any work that's done for the stormwater. And something else I'd like to mention, that I don't know if, it was really frustrating to me to hear, when I was watching the meeting, the last meeting in council, that only thirty percent of the multimodal transit site has been done, or just even the plan of it, only thirty percent. And again, this speaks back to our favorite traffic light situation. I just, I don't understand why things move so slowly along those lines.
I think the good news is, and Kirsten can report this, the contract has been let on this traffic light, and I think we are making some significant progress on the Transit Plaza. I heard this morning, I guess, some more reports on that, so as you talk about transportation, we can bring you updates on those if it's appropriate.
Good, because we've been talking about, well, the traffic light forever, and, but the multimodal transfer site has been in the process in a long, long time, and it just seems like it shouldn't be, or should be more further along than thirty percent.
And I think frankly, one of, you know, we have a small staff, and we have a lot of projects that we're trying to get done, and that's one of your issues, so.
With that traffic light, oh, it's gotta get done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no more items on our agenda. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I think we should just sit here and wait for seconds for about five minutes or so.